So if those that are in the hallway could come in, we'd appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight, everyone. I'm Colleen Feige. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Edina, and it's my pleasure to welcome you here tonight to the Edina School Board Candidate Forum and also to those that will watch it on our website, which is lweedina.org. You're welcome to share that with everyone. So we're happy to have you here and to have our candidates with us. And let me tell you a little bit about the League of Women Voters. We strive to make democracy work by promoting active and informed participation in government, increasing understanding of civic issues, and influencing public policy through education and advocacy. We are proud to join other leagues throughout Minnesota and across the U.S. As a nonpartisan organization, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party at any level of government. But what we do do is we work very hard to grow, empower, and protect the vote. The League of Women Voters of Edina is fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and in practice. That is central to our success in engaging all individuals, households, and members of our community and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. So that you know, you may see around the council chambers tonight some voting equipment. Early absentee voting started on Friday, and this is where you'll come to vote if you choose to vote early. It goes through November 7th, but I would suggest if you plan to vote early, come sooner rather than later, as soon as you get your decisions made. And we're trying to help you decide who you want to vote for, so that's a very important thing to do. Also, the League of Women Voters sponsors -- this is something I was just given -- candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The league is nonpartisan, as I said earlier. The league posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. So you know that. And it's my pleasure to welcome tonight our moderator, Jerry Nelson, who's a member of the League of Women Voters of Anoka, Blaine, Coon Rapids, and also our candidates, Christina Jordan and Regina Neville. And I would like to take a moment to thank the Voter Services Committee of the League of Women Voters. Susan Clark is the chair of that, and this is our fifth candidate forum this month. And it takes a whole league to put this together. We've got timekeepers and question sorters and moderators and everything that gets done, and it takes a lot of work. So I think she, Susan, and her committee deserve a thank you for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Jerry. Thank you very much, and to candidates for being here.
I'm thankful for taking the time to become an informed voter here at this candidate forum. It's so important. It's the best way to figure out who it is that you're most in line with on your ideas. The purpose of this evening's forum is to give you an opportunity to hear the candidates for the Edina School Board talk about issues that you care about. All candidates who filed with the Minnesota Secretary of State were invited, and both of them are here. Thank you very much. We'll try to cover as many issues as possible in the time that we have. And if your question is not asked, feel free to contact the candidates to ask them specifically. Okay, let me explain the rules and format of tonight's forum. Candidates will remain seated throughout the forum. They'll have two minutes to make an opening statement and up to two minutes to answer the questions sent out in advance. Candidates may have one or two minutes to answer each question submitted by the general Edina community, depending on the complexity of the issue. And the moderator, that's me, will tell you which question has one or two minutes for your response. Candidates have two minutes for their closing statement. But in all of these, you don't have to take the whole time. You know, when you're done talking, don't try to fill it up. When you've said what you need to say, that's all we need. League volunteers will be timing the candidates' responses and will indicate when the candidates have 30 seconds or 15 seconds left and then want to stop. But again, if you're in the middle of a sentence, you don't have to cut it off right there. You can finish your sentence. Just don't go on and on. Okay? I will be asking all the questions. LWE Edina determines which questions will be asked of the candidates and attempts in good faith to cover all the issues of interest indicated by the submitted questions. And all written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters Edina. The city of Edina, our host site for this forum, decided in 2022 that they would not livestream the candidate forums for LWE Edina on the city of Edina's online platforms. The city of Edina is recording the forum for LWE Edina and will provide an electronic copy, which we'll get at the end of the forum. And Edina League will put it on their website, lweedina.org, that's simple, in a day or two. It will also be available on Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube, as are all the league candidate forums for this election year. Okay, let's get to the reason you all came here tonight. The two candidates for the special election for Edina School Board are Christina Jordan and Regina Neville. We'll begin with opening remarks from the candidates. And remember to speak directly into your microphone. Is mine coming through just fine? And we'll start with Christina Jordan. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to all of you this evening. I am a lifelong resident of Minnesota and a 25-year Edina resident. My career in education spans over 33 years. 25 of those years were spent as a Minnesota public school teacher, and the last eight years I've spent as an independent education consultant, partnering with educators on a national and international level, developing the best practice solutions in education. I've experienced education from the inside. I've been the one to administer the tests. I've been the one to deliver the curriculum. And I've also led initiatives to bring school and community members together. Edina has traditionally been a leader in Minnesota education, preparing generations of students for success. I'm running for school board because I see opportunities for growth in our district, and I want to ensure that future generations receive the same level of quality education that my three children received here in Edina. We owe it to all of our stakeholders to give back to our best and honor our commitment to defining excellence. I hope that tonight I give you some insight into my qualifications and ability to lead as an Edina School Board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Neville, your opening statement.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Regina Neville, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening's forum. And I'd like to thank the community for their participation to become informed about this school board election. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in Edina for 22 years and were the parents of three proud graduates of Edina High School. This one-year term will fulfill the term of former board member Lenny Wallen-Friedman, who served the school board for over 11 years. The loss of his extensive board experience creates a void that is best filled by a candidate with board experience. Having previously served for eight years on the Edina School Board and a total of nine and a half years representing Edina as a school board member for Intermediate District 287, are overlapping years, not all consecutive, I have the experience necessary to seamlessly join the current board and begin work. I have demonstrated commitment to Edina Public Schools with continual service to the district in many leadership positions since 2000. Some of these positions include chairing the countryside and Edina High School PTOs, co-chairing the Edina Parent Leadership Council, as well as chair of the Edina Education Fund Board. I partnered with the Ed Fund to expand funding for mental health and wellness and literacy. I remain involved with students at Valley View directing the theater program. It's an honor to run for this one-year term. Please visit my website at nevilleforedina.com, and please vote for me on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. So the following question was sent out to the candidates by the League of Women Voters Edina in advance. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond. The Edina Public School community has experienced a number of instances of targeted racial incidents that have happened at and near their properties, and more importantly, to their students and the Edina community. What should Edina Public Schools do to stop future such actions? And we'll start with Regina Neville.
Thank you. The hateful incidents that are referenced in this question are harmful, and they are unacceptable. They shatter the environment of safety for our students and staff of color, and they reduce the dignity of our community. These targeted actions are part of the structural barriers that impact the positive, safe learning environment that is needed for our students and staff. Superintendent Dr. Stacey Stanley and Mayor Jim Hovland have taken the right steps in partnering together as a school and community for the "One Town, One Family" conversations. I'm grateful to have participated with each of the discussions that have happened so far, to learn, unlearn, and to listen to multiple perspectives as we work to build strong relationships and address the issue of racism as a community. I support the continuation of these conversations in addition to building a safe place for students and staff from all backgrounds. As a school board member, I will support the review and development of policies to support each person's identity as valued and contributing members to successful academic and employment outcomes. I'll work to use an equity lens to consider the impact of decisions and ensure that multiple perspectives are represented in the process. Edina is a community that strives for excellence, and we come together to support each other. We can heal and emerge stronger. We need to do our own personal work to examine our biases and extend more grace to one another and lean into love. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Jordan, same question.
So this is certainly a topic that is not unique to us here in Edina. We're seeing this across the country in school districts, and it's very unfortunate that we've had some instances recently that have occurred here in our own community. Edina Public Schools is a district that has always prided itself on equitable policies, procedures, and statutes that hold everyone in the community to excellence. It defines itself as a place where everyone belongs. And it is upon all of us, everyone in the community, staff, students, families, members of the school board, to ensure that everyone feels safe and supported in our schools. Respect in all of our community and of our community property should be at the core of our mission and values. And if we fail to uphold that, we fail to give our entire Edina Public Schools community what they all deserve. I wish that I could sit up here and say that this will never happen again, but I can't promise that. None of us can promise that. All we can do is promise that we will commit to listen, to understand, and commit to a culture of mutual respect, acceptance, and understanding that brings us together in a community of cohesiveness. And if we do that, I feel confident that incidences like this will decrease.
Thank you. Okay. I'm now going to ask the questions submitted by the general community to the League of Women Voters Edina by email or here at the forum. A candidate will have one minute, unless I tell you it's two, okay, to answer each question. And again, you don't have to take the whole time. So this first question, we'll start with Christina Jordan. While our district has done better than the norm for most districts in the state in the school year ending 2022, it has fallen from 2020 and 2021 ratings by school district residents. A rating of excellent dropped from 50% in 2020 to 34% in 2022, whereas a rating of good increased from 34% in 2020 to 57% in 2022. What do you attribute the decline in excellence to just good? Christina.
So this is something that I actually have heard a lot from community members when I'm out speaking with them. We all know that we have an amazing community here in Edina, and that is shown by the fact that people not only grew up here, but they return here to raise their children and put their children in Edina Public Schools. But when it comes to the opinion of our general community, I think that we need to do better. And what I've learned is that we sort of have a public perception problem, and whether what's happening in our schools that the public believes is true or not is actually happening, we need to be transparent, and we need to be open with our community members so that they feel that they are part of the decision-making process here in Edina.
Thank you. Regina Neville. Now, if any time you want me to repeat the question, just tell me, but I won't repeat it every time. Okay, same question about what do you attribute the decline in excellence to just good?
Thank you. Well, I'm not sure if the questioner is referring to the Morris Leatherman Quality in Schools survey. I'm going to reference some comments from that survey that was shared with the school board on August 23rd because it is some data that we have. There is a shift. There is definitely a shift. COVID had a big impact, and there may be additional impacts. So it's hard to know exactly what all of that represents. But part of what Morris Leatherman shared is that in Edina, there is an eight-to-one ratio of excellence or good. So taking excellence and good together, it's an eight-to-one ratio. The rest of the state, the norm was three-to-one. So we did well in that respect. But I do agree that we're not perfect, and we have to listen to community members, continue with transparent communication, and there is always room to improve. So I think that we can definitely do better.
Thank you. Okay, next question. This will be a two-minute one. As a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concern about what is being taught in classrooms? Regina Neville, you're first.
Thank you. When parents have concern about what's being taught in the classroom, I would encourage them to approach the district. And sometimes that's the school board. Sometimes that's administration. It's usually best to begin with the classroom teacher for clarification and then work with the rest of the lead team in their particular site, and then escalate it as needed. So certainly as a board, I know that our job is to approve curriculum, but not to create curriculum. So we definitely rely on best practice, knowing what is recommended, what is nationally normed. And for that, we have excellent classroom teachers for those recommendations, as well as a phenomenal core lead team whose expertise is in this area. As a school board member, my job is to ask questions, to help represent the community so it's clear, and to support the teachers as they're sharing the curriculum that one may be required by the state for graduation or required by Edina, but something that is vetted. But through all of this, really, the primary issue is transparency and communication. There's nothing that replaces building relationships so that we understand, well, why is something chosen? Or if there's something that an individual parent or family disagrees with, there are opportunities by policy to opt a student out of certain parts of that curriculum. So there's more than one course of action to take, and it's something that we need to work together with our teachers and our district and our board to find the right solution.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
So as a former classroom teacher, this is something that I've obviously dealt with firsthand, and I always appreciated it when the parents had concerns about something that was happening in the school if they came to me first. And most of the time, it was something that we could settle, come to an agreement on within the classroom setting. I will add that all curriculum that is taught in the Edina Public Schools is available for parents to review. I can't imagine any teacher telling a parent that they couldn't see what was going to be taught in a classroom. So again, start with your teachers. I know schools host curriculum nights. I would encourage families to go to those, understand what is being taught in our school and from what lens and why. And if it's something that needs to escalate up to the administrator in the building, then that's something that should be taken care of, too. Like Regina said, it is not the job of the school board to write curriculum. However, there are certain things that in the district we are required by the state of Minnesota to teach to our students and make sure that they have a good knowledge of before they graduate from our schools. I would add that one thing that we could do better as a community is listen to our constituents when they have concerns. I said this a little bit earlier, and I'll echo it again. One of the things I hear the most when I talk to people in the community is nobody listens anymore. And we just need to get better at being transparent, making sure that all voices in our community feel like they're heard, and take into account everything that our community is saying to us.
Thank you. Okay, this is another one-minute question. What does equity in education mean to you? And how do you propose to support the needs of all students, including advanced learners, which were formerly known as gifted and talented? Regina Jordan, you're first.
So--
Is it? Yeah.
You said Regina Jordan. So-- That's okay. Regina, Christina, we sound the same.
Christina Jordan.
Okay.
Pardon me.
All right. So obviously, equity is one of those topics that have probably become a little more politicized than necessary. I think that when we actually look at what equity means, it's removing barriers to our students' education. And that is something that as educators and members of the school board and members of the community, we should all aspire to do. However, we need to look at equity beyond just racial issues. It needs to be something that includes what are we doing for our students that have learning barriers? What are we doing for our special ed students? What are we doing to ensure that our gifted and talented students that are twice-exceptional students are getting the services they need? And what can we do to remove barriers for all of the students in our school so that they are given the education the way that it is best received by them?
Thank you. Regina Neville.
Thanks. And I want to clarify that the questioner is asking about equity and gifted and talented, correct?
Right.
Thank you. So equity is foundational. This is core. And there are many types of equity. I absolutely agree. But I also believe that it's fundamental that we take race into account with equity. There is-- we can track the outcomes of students based on race, and that's not okay. There is an opportunity gap, and there are options to address that gap. So having an equity lens-- in the board's case, making policy decisions-- means having everybody's voice at the table and considering the impact of decisions. Every student deserves curriculum and an environment that is supportive. Gifted and talented students deserve rigor. They deserve curriculum that is matched to their level. And all students deserve the access to get to those programs that are best matched for their individual needs.
Thank you. This next question will be a two-minute one. Please provide your thoughts on special education, IEPs, Individuals with Disabilities, Education Act, and the basic services offered for children with disabilities at Edina Public Schools. Regina Neville, you're first.
Thank you. There's a lot of need. We have a lot of students with individual needs, and many of them are-- well, some don't have the opportunity for diagnosis immediately. So that's where we want to begin, is working with children to support them at the earliest age possible. A lot of these needs go right back to funding. We want to make sure that early learning opportunities are funded so that students can be assessed and have immediate support. As they navigate the Edina school system, we need the support for families, for parents, and for students to navigate some of the options that are available. Every child can learn. Every child deserves an opportunity that is supportive of their learning needs. In my years on Intermediate District 287, I've had the chance to work with the top 1% of students with highest level of need. And I've seen how much difference it makes to support teachers and their professional development, to look at innovation, and to allow the opportunity to figure out what does an individual student need and adapt for that person's level of need. Funding is key. It's a fact that in the United States, since 1975, special education was supposed to be funded at 40%, and that's never happened. So it means that funding comes from the general fund to meet those needs. So without correcting funding, attracting more people to the field, and being able to fully staff as needed to meet students' needs, the challenge will continue. I know that we can continue to advocate, and we will.
Thank you. Regina Jordan. Christina Jordan.
That's okay.
They rhyme, you know?
They do. So I think that in some areas, we do an outstanding job in Edina. Southview was just recognized nationally by the Special Olympics for their work that they did with their special ed students. And if you haven't had a chance to see the video, it's really amazing, the work that they've been doing. However, I agree with Regina. All of our students have gifts. Every child can learn. And I think that every school teacher believes that at their core. But they don't always have the resources. They don't always have the support. And we don't always have the tools for early identification. I'm the mom of a dyslexic child. Had my daughter not had a teacher as a mother, she would have probably gone through her years at Edina just thinking she wasn't smart. I had to fight for her to get tested. I was lucky that I had the means to have her tested, but I didn't have the means to send her to Groves or one of those other wonderful places in Edina. So we need to do better at early identification. We need to do better at giving the schools resources and the teachers resources to support those students. And we need to look at, early on, And we need to look at, early on, the science of reading, the science of learning, and how children learn. Because with that, we can give some of those kids the tools they need and avoid some of those stumbling blocks that they face. I agree with Regina. It's a really difficult issue sometimes to get that funding, but it's something that needs to be a priority in our district. And I believe that if we provide that for our students and we give the teachers the support they need, that it's something that we will excel at in Edina.
Thank you. Christina Jordan, the next question. What is your goal for class sizes at every school level? And how do you propose the Edina Public Schools reach those goals?
So again, this is something that, as a teacher, I had personal experience with. And you can look at any survey out there. It doesn't matter what it says. Class size matters. On days that the flu season hit, it was a lot easier for me to teach a class of 20 than it was a class of 33. And that's just a fact. As far as actual numbers, I can't give you an actual number for every single class, but I do know that when we try to give every child what they need, but there are large numbers in the classroom, that becomes really, really difficult. So we need to prioritize making sure we hire enough staff so that our class sizes can be appropriate sizes. And if class sizes are high, we need to give teachers the support in the form of paraprofessionals and other professionals in the building to help support the learning in their classroom.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
Class size does matter. And we also know that there's no one-size-fits-all. So providing a number isn't helpful in isolation. It depends upon the age of the students, their developmental readiness, and also the curriculum being taught. So there are lots of different factors that are involved. So we need to build in some flexibility. Part of that is instructional size. And where Edina has some opportunity is the community's approval of the bond referendum that allowed for renovation of spaces to have breakout opportunities. And spaces within vision of a particular teacher can make a difference. We need to support paraprofessionals. I've had the opportunity to work as a paraprofessional sub. I know what difference it makes to be one-on-one with a student as they work to integrate within that full classroom. We also need to fiscally balance those solutions. So all of this comes into that consideration of, how can we be good stewards of the funds we have to do the best for our students?
Thank you. Next question. How do you plan to hit the ground running in this one-year role? Regina Neville.
I can hit the ground running. I'm ready. I am ready for this. And I've become more excited to do this as the fall has continued. I've been serving in a school board role for Edina Public Schools since 2010. I rolled off of the Intermediate District 287 Board in June. I've been a part of committees. I've continued to take a look at policy. I was a chair for the 287 Board. I had the opportunity to hire a superintendent. So this is something that matters to me. Edina matters to me. And I would really appreciate this opportunity to serve for this year to provide any support that I can.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
Although I have not served on a school board in the past, I am also ready. My job as an education consultant takes me around the country. And what I do for my job is I work with school boards, superintendents, state-level educators, implementing best practices in education, making sure that strategic plans get implemented with fidelity. As a teacher, I have been part of governing boards, partnering with the school board that was part of my district. I've been part of superintendent hires in the past. And I think that the perspective that I bring as an educator allows me to understand education from the inside, and that will give me the opportunity to start from day one and get going.
Thank you. Another one-minute question. Other school districts have partnered with literacy dyslexia specialists, i.e. Groves OG Linda Woodbell, to assist with literacy curriculum. Do you feel that would be a helpful partnership for Edina, and why? Christina Jordan.
So 100%. And I think, based on how I answered my earlier question and the fact that I have a dyslexic child, that would have been such a gift for my child and my family. I had to pay for tutoring for my daughter to get her on track. I took her to Groves for extra help. And to have that as part of her regular day would have not only been a gift for her, but for other kids like her, maybe whose families did not have the means to pay for those things. It's our job as a public education system to educate all of our students and give them all of the resources they need. And that includes partnering with people from the outside to come in and give our students the support that they need, if that's the support that we need to provide for our students.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
I agree in the value of partnerships. And I also have a child who has been diagnosed with dyslexia and ADHD, and we were privileged to be able to get support. In our case, it was Orton Gillingham. Did that for two kids. And it was fantastic. The partnerships for the school district is something that the board can support, but I would step forward with that at the recommendation of the superintendent and our literacy coaches to make sure that we're choosing the partnerships that are the best match for our students. But absolutely, looking at what's available, there are some fantastic opportunities of growth in curriculum. So that's definitely something to look into.
Okay. As a school board member, is there anything you could do to improve the counseling department at Edina High School? And if so, what would that be? Regina Neville.
First, a big shout-out to our counselors. Because national data for years has pointed out that the ratio of counselors to students has not been met almost anywhere. And in Edina, we can use a larger ratio of counselors, certainly a funding issue, but they work hard. I had the opportunity to volunteer for a year at the high school counseling department with the Access Program, to partner with them, to help students who had not had the opportunity to go to college before. And I can see that the support is necessary. So again, there's a fiscal component to this, but there's also a partnering component that can be strengthening some of our programs through volunteerism, and also helping students self-navigate and educate their parents so that we all feel empowered to step together with them. But yes, I agree that there is a need for more support with our counseling program, and they're amazing.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
I would echo Regina in saying that the counselors at our high school are amazing. My own children had the most wonderful counselor, and he was an advocate for them throughout their college application process, throughout their time at Edina High School. He was a safe space for my children to come and speak to when they needed somebody to confide in. And so I am thankful for that counselor every single day. If it is something that the district sees as a need, and like Regina said, it's a staffing issue, it's a fiscal issue, then that's something that I would be in full support of. I think that just beyond academic counseling and college counseling, when we look at the stress our students have been in post-COVID, we could use counselors that help with mental health and other issues, and that is something that I would be in full support of.
Thank you. Next question is, as a school board member, what do you see as your role in advocating for funding for Edina and all public schools? Christina Jordan.
So like I said, I've not been on a school board before, and finance is not necessarily my strength. I bring an education lens to everything. However, I think that when schools are funded, they're more successful, right? We need to be able to fund our staff. We need to make sure that our teachers have appropriate training, professional development, and we need to make sure that our students have everything that they need. And so I know that there are a number of funding sources that come not only from the state, but the federal government. And we oftentimes ask community members for funding. So whenever we can go out and be in support of our schools in raising money for the things that we need, I think that that's something that a school board should be supportive of, but also transparent on what we're using those funds for.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
Funding is key, and advocacy is a part of meeting those funding needs. The school board has a place in that advocacy. The current Edina School Board has been active with the Legislative Action Committee, the LAC. And those goals are exactly where we need to be. So I just want to share some of them that I am in full support of and would also advocate for as a board member. One is linking the basic education formula and the local optional revenue to inflation. There's no inflationary link, but we know inflation is real. And allow locally-elected school boards to renew an existing levy. So that would provide a lot of support for district funding. A third one is increasing English-language learner funding to reduce shortfalls. And then finally, strengthening and supporting special education funding. This is key to the success of our students. We can and we must advocate for it. And one final note, Morris Leatherman's survey noted that 17% of people identified lack of funding as the biggest issue facing Edina Public Schools. We can work on this one together.
Thank you. Should there be a capped maximum enrollment for out-of-district students? Why or why not? Regina Neville.
The out-of-district enrollment is something that is managed by state statute. So this is something that the district will follow state statute to abide by. We will first take our resident students, and then the statute and district policy guide from there. How do we fill the open enrollment slots that exist? So in terms of determining a cap, we already have a mechanism for closing sites by, you know, an individual site if it gets too full, or by, you know, cutting it off at the district as needed. There's also the consideration of the benefits of having additional students join the system. If we have space available, we can keep all teachers on staff by filling those slots. If we aren't able to fill the slots, we run the risk of not being able to afford all of the teachers, since funding is based on average daily membership, students who attend. So there is statute to guide by it, and then the board needs to help manage that policy that supports it.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
So as Regina said, this is something that the state statutes sort of lay out the guidelines for. And yes, we do have a lot of open enrollee students in the community, and Regina's right. When we have our seats full, then we can fund our schools and we can retain our teachers. And I know that when my students were in elementary school, there was a cap at Concord at that time because we were at capacity and there was no more room at that school. However, my niece and nephew, who were open enrollees, went to Cornelia. So they were still able to open enroll in our district. They were still able to have the benefit of Edina education, but at the site level, it was closed. And again, like Regina said, this is something that the state manages and that the school board helps to manage as well.
Okay. This next question is kind of coming from the opposite direction. There's been an outmigration of Edina Public School students in the past three years to other schools besides Edina Public Schools. What is the cause of this, and what can you do as a school board member to bring students back to Edina Public Schools? Christina Jordan.
So this is another one of those topics that, when I'm speaking to people in the community, comes up over and over again. We need to do a better job in Edina of retaining our resident enrollees in our school. Like I stated earlier, one of the main reasons that people said that they left is they didn't feel that they were being heard or supported. I think that we need to do a really good job of keeping the people that we have. And when people leave, I know that we ask those parents why we leave, but what do we do with that information? I also think, and this is probably not going to be a popular thing to say, but when our current chair of the school board tweets out that she is recruiting students from another state, that sends a bad message to our community members. So we need to make sure that we listen to our constituents. We make sure that we are providing our residents with what they need and do what we can to bring those people back.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
So there is a decrease in residential enrollment. For the 2021-2022 school year, it was about 94 students. But they're going to lots of other places. So the information that was presented to the school board shows that there are certainly students going to other public schools. Many also choose private schools or a school that best fits their need. So the exit survey responses showed that the largest number of responses were none of the above. So it indicated that there are many different reasons that families choose an education outside of Edina. That said, families do have the right and should be encouraged to choose their best fit. I also believe it's important for Edina to promote what we do well. We're great at education, and it's okay to market that fact. And it's also important to listen to families to find out where we do have shortfalls so we can correct those and adapt to individual student needs.
Okay, here's another kind of related question. Yes or no, do you support a voucher system? And what impact would a voucher system have on Edina Public Schools? Regina Neville.
As I stated earlier, I do support a family's right to choose. I do not support vouchers. And the reason is that the current system for vouchers would pull funding away from public schools. So no, I do not support vouchers.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
So I'm a public school teacher. My children are products of public education. I support public education. However, I don't think that families' right to choose where their children go to school should be limited by financial means. And so if you would have asked me this question five years ago, I would have said absolutely not. In light of the past couple of years, I would say that I support having students given the opportunity to go where it works best for them and having that funding follow them.
Thank you. Okay. Please rate the district's use of communication on a scale of 1 to 5, with 5 being very effective and 1 being poorly effective. And what, if any, changes would you make in communication? Christina Jordan.
So I would say that if you're talking about at the site level, it would be a 4 or 5. I feel like the school sites do a really excellent job of communicating with their families, getting messages out, talking about what's happening in the school. I would say that if you're talking about at the broader district level, I would probably give it about a 2. One of the things, like I've said earlier, that residents are saying to me is they don't feel heard. They don't understand the processes that are going on in Edina, and they don't feel like they are part of that process. Also, we need to keep in mind that 2/3 of Edina residents do not have students in the public schools. And so we need to make sure that we get our message out to those community members as well, and make sure that they understand what's happening in our schools and that they feel like they are part of the process.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
I agree that communication at the site levels is probably one of our strongest assets, and that's where people have their strongest relationship. And that's really a 5. They're doing great work. And I can just speak for the side I work with right now at Valley View. I always feel communicated and in the loop. It is more challenging when we get to the district-wide level, and we do have room for improvement. That includes building relationships and partnering with the city and the community. Because as Christina said, most of our residents don't have students in school. The Sun Current remains a solid communication format, but I think that the readership for the paper is probably, I read it all the time, but I'm in a demographic that will read on paper. So we need to find a way to get the information out electronically and in the best way that connects with the user. So thank you.
Thank you. As a school board member, what interactions will you have with the teachers' union? Regina Neville.
The school board has the built-in process for communicating with the teachers' union. It's been called Meet and Confer. But the way that that moves forward is something that should be reviewed every year so that it's matching the needs of the current union representatives and the board, to make sure that they're meeting as often as possible. And one, that's going to be about building relationships. It's important that the board hear all of the comments and any concerns from the teachers' union. But what I found most valuable when I was serving on the board is just spending that one-on-one time, getting to know each other. We all share the same goal. How do we support each other? How do we create a phenomenal school district? And how do we support kids? So for the teachers' union, absolutely. This is a key goal of the school board. We need to continue to develop those relationships, work together, and the board needs to support teachers.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
So I actually was a member of the Minnesota Federation of Teachers for 25 years, and I was the union rep at my school for one of those years. And so as a serving member of a union rep at my school, I did have the opportunity to work with the school district in my district. And I was thankful for the time that we got to spend with them. I think it's very important that we have a working relationship with the teachers' union. They do represent the voice of our teachers, who are some of our biggest stakeholders, and they're the ones delivering our strategic plan to our students every single day. So to make sure that they are represented and that we have a working relationship with the union is really important. But I think beyond just a working relationship and representation of the teachers, that's where it needs to stay.
Thank you. The next three questions are going to be two-minute ones. Each time a school shooting occurs in our country, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. What actions would you support to be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools? Christina Jordan.
So I've been on the teacher side of being in a lockdown before, where there was actually an active shooter in my building, and it's very frightening. Fortunately, my students were very well-prepared. We had done drills. There was safety. I don't think that I would ever be an advocate of a teacher carrying a gun in their classroom. I think that that's just asking for additional trouble. I do, however, support security measures at the school. I know most schools have double layers of doors that you have to go through. And I believe at Edina High School right now that some of our security officers are carrying weapons. They're trained, and they know how to use that. But being prepared and taking as many measures as possible to keep our students safe, I think, is never a bad idea.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
I've also had the experience of being in a lockdown when I'm in a building, and it's frightening, but I did not feel unsafe because I knew the protocols of the building. And all of a sudden, I was in this position to see it all roll out, and it worked. And thankfully, that situation was a false alarm. But it was called for the right reasons. I've also sadly experienced a school shooting during my time during my time with the intermediate District 287 Board at the South Education Center. What I learned from that and knew before, but was reinforced afterwards through all of the safety assessments that were done and reviewed, the district had done everything right. And part of what that included is, one, the facilities were set up with physical barriers where needed. And in this case, the shooting happened outside the school, on the property. Edina has spent money and careful planning to make sure that our sites are updated according to the most current recommendations. What was also shared is that protocol is just as important as the physical configuration of the building. Having the protocol in place, reviewing it, and then constantly practicing it does make a difference. Probably the key thing that was reinforced to me as a board member is that relationships make a difference. And having the staff on hand to assist students when they become agitated, to support the staff, having that knowledge is also key in safety. So I support what Edina Public Schools is currently doing, but also to continue to stay current with protocols as they are revised throughout the country. And I know that we will implement best practice.
Thank you. What would you do as an Edina school board member to help students dealing with harassment and bullying? In particular, students from minority groups and LGBTQ students to feel safe and supported at school? Regina Neville.
Thank you. The question is identifying what is sadly a real problem. Not all of our students feel safe and welcomed. I met with a group of high school students this afternoon, and one of the, they had several issues that they shared. One that was shared and repeated is asking for support for racial equity, for students of color, and for the LGBTQ community. So part of what needs, what can happen is just recognizing that we need to educate, learn what we don't know. Support students for their identity. Who are they? Who do they identify as? How do we support them, make them feel welcome? How do we, as adults, get that right? The students also identified that it's important, we just don't know what we don't know. And so sometimes we'll make, we're hurtful. And that is something that we can amend. We can learn what we don't know. Creating a safe and welcoming environment where everyone recognizes that they are accepted. The differences, we have differences, and there is positivity in those differences. And let people know that they are welcomed will help. And also celebrating the differences, recognizing that we have strength in all of our individuality.
Thank you. Christina Jordan.
So I would agree with Regina 100% that it comes from understanding and education, right? And we need to teach our children that it's okay to be different. It's okay to be who you are. Everybody is unique, and thank goodness for that, right? But that should not be at the expense of other students. And I think sometimes that is what some of our students feel. I've also spoken to some students, and they feel like they are being left out of the process. I think that when we invest in counselors in our school for support for our students, when we have policies where everybody is held to a standard of respect and understanding, those things help with a community of belonging in our schools.
Thank you. We have just one more question here. And that is, what ideas do you have for ensuring early childhood education supports the district's goals for students? And Christina Jordan, you're first.
So first of all, let me just say that I think that Edina Public Schools has an amazing early childhood program. It's where my kids met some of their first friends, and I know my neighbors. That's where some of their lifelong friends were made. Investing in our early childhood program is something that is really important because those students are going to be entering our elementary schools. So ensuring that they are taught the early basics, they have the skills that they need to become readers, to become learners, all of those things to be successful when they enter our public schools is key. And partnering with our early education programs is something that we should really continue to do. And like I said, it just ensures that the students who are entering our elementary schools are prepared and ready to learn.
Thank you. Regina Neville.
I agree with Christina. Our early childhood program is outstanding, and it really does create that gateway for success in Edina Public Schools. And the partnering is key. So as the district engages in strategic planning and as we update those plans, we need early childhood at the table. And that is part of the practice that we've been working with as a district. So continuing those partnerships, making sure that those voices are heard, and then linking back as we revise curriculum at every level, look at what is the impact on the grade that comes before and the grade that comes before. And again, just seamlessly, it's cradle to grave. How do we create lifelong learners? It starts with early childhood education, and we make sure that we adapt each program together. It's going to be a continual growth process.
Thank you. I must say, I'm an experienced moderator, and I've rarely seen such a high quality of questions at a candidate forum. I just have to really admire your community for pulling these questions together. Really covered a lot of issues here tonight, important issues. So we are now, I'll invite each candidate to make her closing statement, and we will start with Regina Neville.
Well, once again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening's forum and to everyone who is here in person and also watching the recording. I hope that I've shared throughout the forum that with a total of 12 years of school board experience, I have the necessary background to fulfill the demands of this one-year term. I've been an effective leader of multiple education and community organizations. I have experience as a classroom teacher, certified 712. And I've also worked while my own children were in the school system, and I've continued that service since their graduations. I will work hard for you to advocate for all kids. Education has the power to touch every child so they know that they matter. They have the potential for excellence, and they're supported on that journey by a community who believes in them. We're fortunate to have an outstanding school district and a supportive community. I'm committed to Edina Public Schools. I look forward to serving as I listen to students, families, educators communicate what's important to them and advocate for the changes that are necessary to maintain that excellence. I invite you to please visit my website at nevilleforedina.com and to please vote for me on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Jordan, your final statement.
I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and for allowing us to come here and share our thoughts this evening. My belief in helping every child reach their full potential is so fundamentally strong that I have dedicated more than 30 years of my career and volunteer time to only education. For me, being an educator was a calling. My three children have graduated, and I am thankful for the high-quality education that prepared them for their future. Ensuring this excellence for future generations in Edina will take intentional work that involves digging deep, asking the tough questions, using data to drive decision-making, partnering with administration to ensure implementation of our strategic plan, and welcoming diversity of thought from our community and from within our own school board. Taking a one-year position on the school board will be challenging, but I am ready. I see what is working and what is not nationwide through my work with educators at state and local levels. Collaborating on curriculum assessment, data analysis, and implementation of strategic plans gives me an understanding of complexity of the public school system because I live it daily in my career. Bringing my broad perspective to our school board will ensure that when policy is made, it prepares our students to leave Edina ready to compete nationally and globally in the world that awaits them. That is something no other board member can say they have done. Honoring our motto of defining excellence means we must continuously strive to make progress. On the school board, I will work tirelessly to achieve this. I know how to do this. My ability to understand areas we are excelling as a district and areas where there are opportunities for growth are only going to serve to enhance the current vision of our leadership and ensure to our community that Edina Public Schools continues to be on the path to excellence that has always defined us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I hope I earn your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our two candidates, Christina Jordan and Regina Neville, for participating in the candidate forum tonight. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters Edina for sponsoring this candidate forum and to the City of Edina for videotaping. The tape will be available to all in a day or two for viewing on lweedina.org or on Twitter, Facebook, or YouTube. Thank you for attending tonight's candidate forum and for watching online. Remember to vote by 8:00 PM on November 8th. And early voting is available right now from 8 o'clock to 4:30 right here in this room, if you'd like to vote early. This concludes the candidate forum for the special election for Edina School Board. Good evening. Thank you so much.